So I have a copy of this, what I'm gonna read this morning in my book that I see every day. And I just thought I'd share it with everyone here. "I wish for you comfort on difficult days, smiles when sadness intrudes, rainbows to follow the clouds, laughter to kiss your lips, sunsets to warm your heart, gentle hugs when spirits sag, friendships to brighten your being, beauty for the eyes to see, confidence when you are in doubt, faith that you can still believe, patience to accept the truth, and love to complete your life. And may God's grace see you through every crisis." And that was written by Ralph Waldo Emerson. So, amen.
"Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Next item is public comment. If anyone is here from the public that wishes to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only, you may do so now. Please use the podium, identify yourself, and you have up to three minutes. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. I want to have a comment on two points from the agenda today. The first one is about the election of the minority vice chair. I know that we recently did have a vote that did not go well for the vice chair. And it doesn't indicate in this agenda who the nominees are for this round. And I'm assuming that that's gonna be done today. My hope is that that agenda, excuse me, that nomination is not gonna be the same individual that was nominated before. I feel like that that person, I'll just name his name, Mr. Skaggs, Commissioner Skaggs, did not pose himself in a right way to be even a commissioner, as far as I'm concerned. Couldn't even keep a covenant with his wife, much less had some backdoor dealings with his mistress and her business. So I'm told, excuse me, so I'm told. If I'm incorrect, somebody please correct me. That's all I'll say to that matter. The second point I want to add to my comment today is about the federal Corona relief funds. It's my understanding that we have $127.6 million that are coming from those funds. And I just want the board to think about what that means if we accept those funds and that we start spending those funds. There are conditions in the write-up for those funds that the federal government is gonna mandate. And I'll just read a portion of that from the federal government's documents. It states that the recipients of the federal money must agree to comply with all other applicable federal statutes, regulations, and executive orders, and recipients shall provide for such compliance by other parties in any agreements it enters into with other parties relating to this award. Now, I have a pretty good memory of the first year of President Biden, federal government, his administration, and how many executive orders he put out just in his first 100 days, frankly. They were, I think, more than the previous administration put out in the whole term. We are gonna be beholden to anything in the future that gets executed by this president. So it's probably not even written yet. I just, I want you guys to be aware of that. If you need counsel to look at that, then we should, because that is an open-ended argument, and it's disagreeable by me to have that beholden over us by a federal government. Excuse me. We are a republic, and the moment that we sign something that says the federal government can control us by virtue of a promise of money, that's wrong, in my opinion. We lose that right to be republic in that regard. And again, maybe I'm looking at this wrong. I really would hope that you would look at that differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Happy to be here again. Thanks. I do want to thank you guys for what you're doing. I just want to point out that we had an opportunity to improve our government. Each and every one of you had an opportunity to improve our government. We found out at the last meeting that an investigation had been done on a sitting member of the county commissioner board, and that there was a conflict of interest that was discovered. And this individual, Phil Skaggs, also had been openly derisive and condescending to his constituents at several meetings and on social media time and time again. Each and every one of you that is a sitting commissioner failed to act on that. I don't know if it's because you're worried about your political base, but I would tell you, for the conservatives sitting up here, if you're worried about your political base and doing the right thing and acting in a moral manner, you don't know your base. And I'm here to tell you that the constituents that you represent are waking up and are not gonna stand still anymore for this kind of behavior. Phil Skaggs should have been removed from his seat. Phil Skaggs, what did you guys do by abdicating your responsibilities? He's gonna kick himself up to the State House? He's running for a state seat? Because of your failure to act in our best interests, in the interests of we, the people. It's not gonna be tolerated any longer. I watched Democrats on this board who came to an erroneous conclusion on who should represent their caucus, make plenty of right decisions all throughout the voting process, and then still abdicate their authority with the final vote. And if the conservatives had not chosen to step forward into the breach, Phil Skaggs would be sitting in minority vice chair right now. This is about trust and relationships. Trust, because we're electing you to represent our best interests, to do the right thing, to do the things that we would do if we were in your positions. And I don't understand why it is that now that I've been involved in local politics, that every school board that I meet, every county commissioner that I speak at, and every local representative seems to feel that toeing the party line or not causing a wave is the right course of action. It is time to stand firmly behind the values that saw this great republic rise to prominence in the world. And I don't know why that message is so hard to communicate. You simply need to do the right thing in your office, or don't run again. And certainly, don't kick yourself up to Lansing. Don't level up. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Item number six, which is the election of the minority vice chair. And to do this, I will call upon Commissioner Skaggs for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. As leader of the Democratic Caucus and in the name of the Democratic Caucus, I nominate Steve Wooden, Commissioner... We seem to be okay. To be minority vice chair of the Kent County Commission.
It is moved and seconded. There is a formal resolution that has been distributed. Does that encapsulate your motion?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chair.
All right. Been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? If not, this is a voice vote unless there's a call for a roll call. So I will go ahead and take a voice vote. All those that support the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Alls that oppose, say no. It unanimously carries. All right, congratulations, Commissioner Wooden. All right, next item is a closed session, and I will call upon Commissioner, I'm excuse, Vice Chair Breeby.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move to go into closed session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act to consult with the county's attorney regarding trial settlement strategy concerning the severe weather procedure arbitration matter. The county's attorney has advised the board that an open meeting on this issue would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigation or settlement position of the county.
Motion is made. Is there support?
Support.
Supported. This is a roll call vote.
On the roll call vote for closed session, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Bolter. Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yes, 0 no.
All right, we will be moving into a closed session here for this item. And we need to have Amy.
Amy, Jeff, Sheriff, Under Sheriff, Chief Deputy.
Amy, Jeff, Sheriff, Under Sheriff.
Chief Deputy Administrator.
And Chief Deputy Administrator. And Administrator.
You?
No, 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 you.
Jenny.
And Chief Deputy.
Yeah.
Jenny James.
Oh, there she is. Jenny, you are in as well. The rest of you are saved the hassle. So we'll take a short recess here till we can get the closed session. Again, my apologies for the inconvenience on the closed session. The last one, I think, went for an hour and a half, so we beat your record substantially. So good work, guys. All right, I'm gonna call on Vice Chair Breeby for a motion coming out of our closed session.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move to approve the acceptance of the recommended settlement agreements regarding the severe weather procedure arbitration matter.
And that has been distributed in written form, identified as Resolution 1-27-22-18.
Support.
Thank you.
It is supported by Commissioner Hennessy, was it? Oh, Jones. See, these things are throwing me off. All right. Any more comments or questions from Commissioners? If not, that is a roll call. That is a roll call vote. So, oh. Hi, Clerk. Welcome.
Good morning. On the motion to adopt Resolution 127-22-18, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolter.
Yes.
Antor. Commissioner Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yes, 0 nays. The motion passes. Resolution 18 is adopted.
Very good. Thank you. We have moved to item number eight on our agenda, which is the consent agenda, and I will call upon Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. I move the consent agenda with items A and B.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Bulkowski. Discussion? Not? Will you please take the roll call?
On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolter.
Yes.
Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yes, 0 nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We will move on to item number nine, 9A, and I will call on Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today I move Resolution 127-22-8, 2022 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding for 63rd District Court.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Morgan. Any comments or questions from the Commissioners? I see none. If you'll go ahead and take the roll call.
On the motion to adopt Resolution 8, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolter.
Yes.
Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yes, 0 nays. The motion passes. Resolution 8 is adopted.
Thank you. I will move to item 9B, and again, go back to Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 9 of today's date, Secondary Road Supplemental Grant Award for the Sheriff's Office.
Support.
Moved and supported again by Commissioner Morgan. Discussion? Comments or questions from the board? I see none, so if you'll go ahead and take the roll call.
On the motion to adopt Resolution 9er, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl. Bulkowski.
Yes, sir.
Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolter.
Yes.
Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yes, 0 nays. The motion passes. Resolution 9er is adopted.
Thank you. I will move to 9C and call on Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the adoption of Resolution 10 of today's date, Fiscal Year 22 County Veterans Service Fund Grant Agreement from Kent County Veterans Services.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Bolter. Thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, will you please take the roll call?
On the motion to adopt Resolution 10, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolter.
Yes.
Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yes, 0 nays. The motion passes. Resolution 10 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item 9D, and again, call on Commissioner Green.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. I move the adoption of Resolution number 11 of today's date, request to provide community policing officer at Plainfield Charter Township from the Sheriff's Office.
Is there support?
I'm moved.
Supported by Commissioner Burl. Thank you. Comments or questions? If not, we'll again ask for the roll call.
On the motion to adopt Resolution 11, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl. Bulkowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Mr. Bolter.
Yes.
Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yes, 0 nays. The motion passes. Resolution 11 is adopted.
Thank you. We will move to item 9E, and I will call on Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll again move Resolution 12 of today's date, request to provide school resource officer at Kenowa Hills Public Schools.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Vice Chair Breeby. Any comments or questions? If not, will you please take the roll call?
On the motion to adopt Resolution 12, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breeby.
Yes.
Commissioner Bolter.
Yes.
Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 yes, 0 nays. The motion passes. Resolution 12 is adopted.
Thank you very much. We will move to item 9F, and I will again call on Commissioner Bolter. You're making up for...
I was super busy in finance. He's trying to move us along. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to move Resolution 13 of today's date, use of the federal coronavirus relief funding from the Administrator's Office.
All right, is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Jones. Comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Coleman.
Mr. Chair, I move that we divide the question so that we can take as separate votes the two items funded under the revenue loss category.
All right, and the motion's been made to divide the question to separate those two items from the larger package that is part of the motion. That is a motion pursuant to Rule 3.15. Under standing rules, is there a second?
There's a second here.
It is supported by Commissioner Ponstein. Any comments or questions on the motion to divide the question? Yes, Commissioner Skaggs. Were you able to locate it?
I've got it.
All right, thank you. All right, so the issue, the motion before the board is a motion to divide the question under Rule 3.15. Yes, Commissioner Wooden.
Just, as Commissioner Coleman said, it was on the two items involving lost revenue. I only see one in the list. Could those two items be more clearly, explicitly stated so we understand what we're splitting?
It's a motion to split. We haven't done it yet, but yes, can you identify the two that you were asking be separated?
Yeah, they're identified with asterisks, but it's the organizational improvement in employee well-being and development for a million, and the diversity, equity, and inclusion strategic plan for 55,000.
Does that clarify that for you?
It does.
Any other comments on the motion to divide? So the question is, do we separate those out, or do we take up all of the issues in the package of the original motion as a singular motion? Is it clear on what we're voting on?
Can you do that one more time?
Yes. The motion to divide is, the underlying motion is to approve all of the funding identified in Resolution 13. The motion to divide is to separate out two of those items for separate consideration. Correct?
So a yes is to divide, and a no is not to divide?
A yes is to divide, a no is to take it up as a singular package motion.
Okay, thank you.
For clarity, Chair, could we do this as a roll call?
It is a voice vote unless there's a request for a roll call. You made a request for a roll call. You're entitled to it. Yes, Commissioner?
Chair, I just want to know if you could explain why we need to do that?
Well, we don't need to do it. It's a request to do it.
But why does he feel that we need to do it?
Why do you feel the need to do it? I guess...
I'm sorry, I just don't know.
No, that's a, that's a great question. I think I, there's a couple aspects of these two that I want to delve into more with separate deliberations, including, you know, understanding of the revenue loss category under ARP, and then specific to the items which, if we split, you know, I'll address in those deliberations. If we don't split, I can describe in more detail, voting on the whole package.
That didn't help me.
And as Commissioner Coleman and I have talked about this before, I've indicated I believe he can make those comments, even if we don't split this and that dividing the question is not particularly necessary. But at any rate, we will see what the will of the board is. Recall, roll call has been requested on that motion to divide.
On the motion to divide the question of Resolution 13, Commissioners Wooden. Womack.
Stein.
I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
Stein.
An abstaining is not, my ruling is that you cannot abstain unless you can identify a particular financial impact as a consequence?
No.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners Teal.
No.
Sparks.
No.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
No.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
No.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
No.
Burl.
No.
Bulkowski.
No.
Vice Chair Breeby.
No.
Commissioner Bolter.
No.
Commissioner Antor. Chair Steck.
No.
Mr. Chair, you have 6 yes, 12 nays. The motion to divide the question fails.
Okay, so we will debate this and deliberate this as a singular motion. Any comments or questions with respect to the underlying motion? Commissioner Coleman, I thought I might hear from you.
Indeed, Chair, thank you. So I had hoped to split the question so that I could vote in the affirmative for most of these items. There are a couple of things related to these revenue loss category items that I would like to both comment on and ask questions. The first is related to the organizational improvement and employee well-being. I had expressed some concern lately last week on just like the kind of ambiguity of that million dollars and the, after earlier this week having a conversation with Administrator Vanderberg, I actually feel confident that the plans underlying that million dollars over five years are good ones. I think at the conclusion of my comments that if the Chair would like, I think it'd be good to have on the public record from the Administrator just a little more about the plans for that, that million under that item, under the diversity, equity, inclusion strategic plan. So I had earlier, you just clarified that that's, you know, for outside consultants. So my, my perspective on this one certainly is influenced from my experience with DEI programs at my day job, which is often, you know, DEI programs can get a little political, and I think that they most often get political when there are outside people involved. I, just as an example, that is, you know, forming my perspective, last month, you know, there was an outside person, you know, in the DEI program at my day job, you know, who was presenting and said things... Indeed, Chair, thank you. So I had hoped to split the question so that I could vote in the affirmative for most of these items. There are a couple of things related to these revenue loss category items that I would like to both comment on and ask questions. The, the first is related to the, the organizational improvement and employee well-being. I had expressed some concern lately last week on just like the kind of ambiguity of that, that million dollars and the, after earlier this week having a conversation with Administrator Vanderberg, I actually feel confident that the, the plans underlying that, that million dollars over five years are good ones. I, I think at the conclusion of my comments that if the Chair would like, I think it'd be good to have on the public record from the Administrator just a little more about the plans for that, that million under that item, under the diversity, equity, inclusion strategic plan. So I had earlier, you just clarified that that's, you know, for outside consultants. So my, my perspective on this one certainly is influenced from my experience with DEI programs at my day job, which is often, you know, DEI programs can get a little political and I think that they most often get political when there are outside people involved. I, just as a, an example that is, you know, informing my perspective, last month, you know, there was a, an outside person, you know, in the DEI program at my day job, you know, who's presenting and said things like that if I were to hold a door for a female, that that's an example of latent sexism. Things like that caused me concern and I think that there's benefit to a focus on ensuring that we're, you know, inclusive of lots of perspectives and a, a diverse, you know, workforce here in Kent County. And I think, you know, just an example from within Kent County from last month, we, we have the Afghanistan, you know, refugees settling here. We did a significant, you know, expenditure for that within the county to help, you know, with that a month or so ago. And a doctor that's in Commissioner Bolter's district, he was working with one particular family just to help him out, discovered that the dad of the family had particular professional skills, connected, you know, that, that man with a business in my district and that business hired that, that man and that is the kind of like welcoming and inclusion that I like to see. I think that Kent County can do a better job of diversity and inclusion without getting external consultants involved. So with that one, unfortunately, I'll have to vote against the whole package because of my concerns on that one. So thank you, Chair.
Okay. That can part as a request for an explanation. Do you want to provide?
Sure, absolutely. So if you look at the work we did with DEI in Ottawa County, part of the foundation of that was talking to the largest employers in the county and hearing from them. In fact, if you go to the Higher Reach site, so Higher Reach is a program that's helping HR do a more scientific job of hiring as far as the testing that happens and all that, but there's a page on that site that shows the employers of West Michigan and who's engaging in DEI. The unfortunate thing is that just the letters DEI conjure up a whole lot of different meanings in different people's minds, just like other terms that are thrown around without good definition. So the way we approach it is this, we know that our major employers have said that if we don't become more welcoming in West Michigan, if people are different than the cultural norm, investment decisions in the future will be made elsewhere. And so part of our strategy is, is to make sure that we can keep the prosperity of West Michigan, Kent County going in the future. And part of that is just learning about that and making sure we're being as welcoming as we can. Also, there is a focus, I think, on implicit bias, which is a scientific fact that our brains have implicit bias and that that can impact situations without our intending to at all. And so, you know, we are not, this is not a woke initiative or something like that. When I think of all the labels that get thrown around, it's really about operationalizing the kinds of inclusion type principles that will allow us to do our part to make sure that we can promote the future prosperity of the county in a way that will have as many companies deciding to stay here because the fact is, many of our companies are global and they have to attract global talent from all over the world. And when people come from other parts of the world, they don't always feel very welcome in West Michigan. And so that is kind of more of the focus behind it and it's not some kind of thing where we're saying, gee, we need a certain number of this and this and this, or it's not that old thinking at all. So.
Commissioner Burrell, I'll get back to you. Commissioner Jones, I believe you were next.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to clarify that there is a specific document from the federal government on how these funds can and cannot be spent. And I'd like to clarify that one of the options is not giving this back to the taxpayers. Is that correct?
That is correct. In fact, I'm glad you said that because part of the ARPA money requirement is that there is some aspect of benefiting equity type work or inclusion type work. And so that is, you know, it's, while it may look like a minor investment, when we look at the fact that we will be creating a strategic document with key performance indicators, it will be very public and we'll report out on that. One benefit of doing this is that everybody will know what we're up to and everybody will be able to see what we're doing with the KPIs and then give input on that if somebody disagrees with the approach we're taking.
I just wanted it clear that it is not an option to give this back to the taxpayers.
Yeah, under the ARPA, I think it is clear it cannot go back to the taxpayers. It is also clear that it cannot be used to pay off debt, current debt and liabilities.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. When I'm looking at organizational improvement and employee well-being, being in development, every employer can tell you right now that you cannot find employees, let alone good employees. I believe that that money will be used to help retain employees, help with customer service, teaching them, and enhancing the operations as it says here. So I definitely will be voting for this package.
And if I could follow up on that, our expectation isn't that you're saying, here's a million, go send, spend it and tell us how it goes. You will be getting a very detailed plan. So when the ten million was set aside, it was more like, this is what we're setting aside for emergent needs. There will be a different action on the rest, the hundred and seventeen million. But really, we are looking at a, a very strategic approach to employee development that the, a million over five years may not be enough. I don't know, but we'd really love to get started because if we can use the ARPA money, we have to have it spent by December of two thousand twenty-six and it's always good, I think, to use money like that and get as much done as we can, you know, before that date hits. So there'll be a whole lot more detail coming. So I, I think you'll be pleased with that.
Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Definitely on that first item, I, I agree totally with Commissioner Sparks that, I mean, we're all under tons of stress and related to just regular life and the pandemic adding to that, what we can do to help our staff, I think this is a great investment and trust Al and HR to use it appropriately. As it relates to the diversity, equity, and inclusion plan, we have to make a plan, we have to set goals, and we have to hold ourselves accountable to that if we want an inclusive community. And again, if you'd like, we have an extremely detailed diversity, equity, and inclusion plan at Disability Advocates and it's, these things don't happen just because you wish them to, you know, that, that you have to be intentional in your inclusion of folks. We have, we have a federal mandate which is allowed by the Constitution. If you send federal money, they can put strings on it and they do. So that's allowed by our Constitution and our republic form of government. So one of the strings for us is that fifty-one percent of our board must be people with disabilities and we count, we have to count. Today, it's a hundred percent because we're intentional because of the wisdom behind that requirement. Just, I don't know if it's bragging, it's a statement of fact. Today, at about four fifteen at my board meeting, if they still have me as executive director, at four fifteen, fifty percent of our board are going to be people of color. Why? Because a few years ago, we set an intentional goal that we need to be inclusive as possible at Disability Advocates. As a county, we are doing a good job. I think, again, I know the hiring of Ms. Branson in this role of being our equity officer is a right step. However, how do we measure what she's doing? We have to set goals. And if people bring out these comments about, you know, just, we can challenge those. At the same time, one of my favorite sayings of this last year from a great Irish poet is he was challenged by a friend of his when this Irish poet said, oh, I was blind to that. I was blind to that. And the, the friend said, please stop using my impairment as a metaphor for your ignorance. This, his friend happened to be blind. So we throw words around as if they are meaningless, but I'm the white guy with nothing but privilege in this community. And for us to, again, I'm not saying I have to be less for others to be included. That's the big myth out there that we've, somebody's trying to sell us that I have to lose to include more people at this table. So we have to make a plan, we have to have real goals, we have to hold ourselves accountable to that. This fifty-five thousand dollars is a nice first little payment towards that. So that's where I'm at. I can't be a stronger yes on that. Be the question split or part of this package. So we gotta, folks, let's, yeah, let's speak the truth, let's call everybody out that no matter where they're coming from on the edges, right, left, top, bottom. So, that's where I'm at.
All right, Commissioner Burrell.
Yes, I was just curious for that executing a contract for the DEI, is there a person or company that is in mind on that? I had a similar situation in Wyoming and I thought the individual was very divisive and was not team building and we do need somebody that, that can be team building and, and bring people together. I think that's very important if we want this to succeed. So I'm just kind of curious the process on that.
We know of two to three companies in the Grand Rapids area that have done a lot of this work successfully, but we've not selected one. We've not selected one yet. No, we'd have to do that through the process. So, and, and you're encouraged to share your perspective on that with Al.
Absolutely.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Hennessy.
I support the two items that have been questioned here, the DEI strategic plan and the organizational improvement in employee well-being and development categories. Help me to understand though, the last line where it, where this includes a focus on understanding brain chemistry to improve health, team building, and performance.
Yes, so the, the Robertson Brain Clinic did a study of West Michigan law enforcement that Kent County participated in, Grand Rapids, several of the local police departments, Ottawa County, City of Holland, and basically it's a world-renowned brain doctor and author who has a soft spot in his heart for law enforcement. And so, but part of his, through his research, and he's an M.D. and he has a Ph.D. in data analytics, he developed a method of assessing an individual's brain chemistry over five different brain chemicals and whether they fall into a range that's healthy. And if they fall outside of the range, his work found that the average law, police officer, law deputy has a hundred and fifty-one dopamine rushes a day, more than the average other occupation, and that that can cause problems with behavior, family life, on-the-job decisions, and that type of thing. And so the, the program offers diet, exercise, and supplemental recommendations that are tailored to each individual person who takes the assessment. And then there's follow-up and, and ultimate, and so at Ottawa County, we expanded that during the pandemic to health and mental health. And here, we'd also like to ultimately have all employees go through it. I mean, the goal is to have employees as healthy as they can be so that they're happy at work, happy at home, and making the best decisions they can at work. A side benefit, I think, the data analytical piece, after two years of being in the program, showed that the two hundred and forty Ottawa County employees that went through it, if they stuck with the recommendations that were made for them through the rest of their career at Ottawa County, so it might be two years for one person before they retire, twenty for another, fifteen for another, the projected savings through the AI program that was used, that was developed and used, was forty-nine million dollars. And so I was thinking, hmm, I wonder if they're only half right. You're saving twenty-five million dollars. And so I think not only is it a huge investment in the health and well-being of employees, but ultimately it's an investment that should pay big dividends.
And the numbers you're using are from Ottawa County, so.
Ottawa County, right, right.
I think I'm up to Commissioner LeGrand, but I do have you on the list.
Thank you, Chair. This is a very interesting and broad list and if we're going to be investing in forward-thinking things like broadband and if we're going to be working on aging county buildings, which obviously needs to be done, those are great uses of this money. Bailing out the NAP's corner drain, I get less excited about, although I'm excited to put the whole NAP's corner drain behind us. But investing in people sounds like one of the smartest things that we can be doing at this point and I feel like we have been under-investing in our people in Kent County and, and I think it's a great opportunity. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things, and I don't need it right now, but it would be great if Amy could get staff retention data. I would like to know, especially for law enforcement, what are their concerns, what are their issues? We, we are approaching a crisis at the county in terms of making sure that we have enough law enforcement officers, especially at the jail. We have an increasing population, we have courts closed, so that creates a further stress on the jail. I mean, we have people that are, are waiting for trials for two years. I think we have almost fifty up for that because they're stuck. And so that creates huge pressure on our staff. There's not a ton of incentive to take that job. Nobody wants to do those jobs. God bless them that they want to, but we need to do everything we can to keep them and keep them happy and support them in any way that we can. So I support that. NAP drain, shout out to our drain commissioner. That has been a huge problem for years. There's huge salination that's going on in people's wells and we need to get this done. It was a great example of collaboration between the city, the township, and the county, and we can't keep kicking the can down, down the road because the cost keeps going up. So appreciate that. And lastly, just the restaurant fee, nobody's talking about that, but that is, again, probably one of my proudest moments as we have to give them relief. Not only are we letting them not pay their county fee or forgiving them their county fee, we're paying their state fee because the state won't forgive their fee and we're still inspecting and still making sure that food is safe. So I fully support all of this. I appreciate staff for doing this and I hope we all support your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to follow up a little bit here on this diversity, inclusion, and equity. I, I understand diversity. I get inclusion. I think inclusion is real important. Where I get a little confused is equity. I, I know for a fact that I'm not as smart as Commissioner Bolkowski. That's a fact and I try to work on, I try to work on that and I, I'm nowhere as handsome as Commissioner Bolkowski. So I, I guess where little, little folks get a little bit confused and fuzzy on this is equity and what exactly does that mean? And so I need to pay attention and probably get brought up to speed on this, but I, I think most of us don't have a problem at all with the diversity and the inclusion. I think we need to do that. Where I need help is on the equity because, you know, I understand my strengths and I understand my weaknesses and some of my weaknesses are, you know, pretty broad. But I think for me, it's, the confusion comes in when we start talking about equity and what that means and I need to listen more. So.
And we are putting the commissioners at the head of the line on that brain work, so. Sorry, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Stuck. So once again, it's a long document. It went through the Finance Committee, so I guess if you were on the LHR, probably the details and the questions for those that couldn't come to that meeting in person are probably numerous. Commissioner Bolkowski, I love your passion. I, I really do. But at the end of the day, this is a lot of money. I mean, over the past two years, I don't know how many trillions of dollars that we have spent, we're, we're spending them. And, you know, to hear that the federal government said that these dollars, which are, I guess I can't even say, say they're taxpayer dollars because we've already used up their portion of it. These dollars to fund these are from future generations and we're spending and spending. The tax dollars already, I mean, the taxpayers already send the county money where things like this should have been already being worked on and done over time. But we're relying on a federal government, which I've heard has strings attached. I'm not so concerned about the strings. It's the constant changing of what string is going to be applied to this and what influence, political and/or non-political, that are going to be, be tied to this money. I've, you know, I've got questions too. I mean, you know, the, the food service licensing, thanks to Chair Bolter for bringing that up. I mean, these folks, they're, they're not just struggling. They're, they're out of jobs. They're losing their businesses. They're losing their livelihoods. They're losing their homes. They're borrowing just to try to stay afloat. And yes, we've got to take care of our own employees, but there are some serious concerns that have to do with the people that live in that. And I, I, it just bothers me that when we spill out money and, and last night, when I heard the governor say that she's all four tax cuts, oh, I think her and I are getting a little bit closer if, if that's what the plan is. So I'm gonna, you know, it's, it's, it's a long document. I'm not going to say one's more important than the other. I think they all are. But folks, the money's running out, and a lot of this will just be a little, look, we did something. We applied some money, but, you know, the problem's going to still be there at the end of the day. So this, this whole spending spree that governments are on, where one government sends money to help out another governmental unit who then helps other governmental units, seems to forget about the most important person, and that's the citizens that we represent.
Commissioner, I'm going to go to Commissioner Wooden first because
Thank you, Chair.
He's not had a first shot at it, and then we'll come back to Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. I want to echo many of the previous comments made by several of our colleagues. I, I think it's absolutely wise to confirm that in the end, we can't give this money to the taxpayers directly. And frankly, if we just don't accept it, it just goes back to the federal government or it'll go somewhere else. And frankly, I wouldn't, I want to make sure that we can make truly transformational investments in this county so we can succeed. We can do more than just tread water. We can get ahead of the future. And I am really appreciative of the things in this list. The NAP Corner Drain, I echo the previous comments. In the end, that is something we have to act on. It's only going to get worse. And it is a wise investment for us to make and a transformational investment. Similarly, the work that we've done to help our food providers with the food service licensing fee, again, a worthy investment to make. Regarding the, the two that have been continued, that have been the main topic of debate, I can't agree more that we need to do, that we need to do this, make this investment to support employer retention. I, you know, I echo and have the same experiences everyone else here has had, where we have seen employers continue to struggle to retain employees. And that's only going, that's not going away anytime soon, and we need to figure out how we can do our part. And whether the question is to bring in an outside consultant or work internally, I would simply bring up the fact that we have brought outside consultants before for things like our strategic plan, where a fresh set of eyes who are not immersed in our work can identify things that we can improve upon, things that we can work on. It's, an outside consultant can identify the talents. We need an accounting administrator and, or can identify things that we need to consider for a DEI plan. But in the end, those choices come back to us. The outside consultants for those matters gathered information, presented options, and it was the board that made those final decisions. So I certainly see the value in bringing in a fresh set of eyes to ensure that we have a DEI plan that represents Kent County and identifies the different ways we can make this county work better. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Skaggs?
Thank you, Chair. As far as the, the, the DEI strategic plan, I think a lot of us worked awfully hard to move in this direction. You know, I'm, I'm just reading this paragraph. Initiatives to ensure all county employees feel a sense of belonging in the workplace. Sounds good to me. That we ensure equitable access to services. That sounds good to me, too. I mean, I think that can sound like, say, building the North Kent building to make sure that people have equitable access on the north side of the county. We have one in the south. We have one in the central of the city. I think it's making sure who's using our services? Do they know these services are available? And are we delivering it in such a way that, that works for everyone? And are we making sure that, that that's the case and that we're asking them? And then I think, lastly, making sure externally that, that we are a welcoming place for all people, in part because that's the right thing to do, in part because it supports our economic sustainability as, as it says there in the last sentence. That all sounds pretty reasonable to me. I know that some of these things make people feel uncomfortable. Some of them make me feel uncomfortable. That's okay. I think that's how we learn. It doesn't mean we have to accept everything, but I think we should hear people out. I got a new topic to mention, though. And Al, I know we talked about this before, but I'm looking at the top of page two. The reimbursement to the CAA. So this is a big chunk of change, I think, as Commissioner Ponstein mentioned. You know, I think we already had given, I think, $2 million to the CAA for building improvements over there, to a building that's soon going to belong to them, and that's us. And I'm just curious as to what was the timeline here for these events being canceled? You know, I, I know that Commissioner Steck and Commissioner Bolter were working on this, and this was a difficult period of time. And I get that it was difficult. They wanted to plan events. We were not sure how long it was going to take for us to have the clinic up and running. But I'm just concerned, were they booking events?
Yes, so.
But hold on. At a period of time in which, were they doing that in consultation with the county? And, stop answering my questions. And were they doing it, and were they doing it?
I'll remind the commissioners to address the chair.
Were they doing it, were they doing it with consultation? Like, did we know this was coming? Or did we give them some sort of warning? Or could we have given them some sort of warning that, you know, we're going to have this last a little bit longer than maybe the original contract plan? So just a little more detail on how we got to a place where we're owing $680,000.
Sure. Do you want me to take it, or do you want to take it?
Well, since I was there negotiating, maybe I'll give it a first shot.
All right.
And if, if you had. So there's lots of questions in there, Commissioner. I, I will say, first of all, that the specific expenses here are out-of-pocket expenses that were identified as being incurred as a consequence of our request to extend the vaccination center beyond what they had anticipated would be the end. And so, they had gone ahead to book certain events. And when we extended it, we did require them to cancel those bookings. And so, this is to reimburse them for those costs that they incurred for that cancellation. The question about whether or not there could have been additional or enhanced communication in advance of that, such that they would not have made those bookings, is a more complicated question. And, and certainly, we may be able to go back and, and do some Monday morning quarterbacking about could there have been, should there have been some additional communications? But the fact is that they asserted they moved forward in good faith, expecting the end of the vaccination agreement to be at a certain point in time. And they acted in order to maximize their responsibility to get, to get events booked into those facilities. And, and whatever it is, we ended up asking them to cancel those.
Okay. Thank you.
Couldn't have said it better.
All right. Any other questions? You're on the second round. Anyone else on the first round? Yes. I'll go with Commissioner Womack, and then we'll come back to you. Okay.
I have some comments, but, but first I want to ask administrator, with the people we're bringing in, will there be any DDI strategic plans that involve commissioners taking any training? I've been here five to six years, and I don't really remember any for the commissioners. And it starts at the top. When you think of Wayman Britt, who has done some incredible things in his 18 months, but even though he had 12 commissioners fighting for him, it only took a few to run Wayman Britt out of here. Very talented county administrator. If you look at myself, one of the few commissioners chairing a board for the governor of the state of Michigan, but I've always been told I'm unqualified or I made the mistake of standing up. And no fault of anyone that I was arguing with, but it is looked down upon. When a, when an African-American stands up against what he might see as injustice, it's called aggression. When a white man does it, it's called passion. It is, is the type of leadership we're looking for. And like I said, there's 12 probably commissioners, the majority. So I always speak good of the Kent County Board of Commissioners because I know the majority of commissioners supported Wayman Britt. I know the majority of commissioners support me. But it doesn't take much of a hurdle to stop African-American. I bring this up to say, not only do we need Teresa Branson, we have to support her because what good is her role if she ever stands up to something she sees as wrong? And then she's ridiculed or she's outed, and then other African-Americans even come to you. When I came back to Michigan from New York, born and raised here, when I came back from Harlem, the first thing people and grandparents, and they tell me this, just as last week, I got a call from a pastor, like, if you speak out, you know, these white people are never going to let you do this. They're not going to let you do that. And I'm like, whoa. But I'm elected to speak the truth. You know, being in a caucus where we have new rules that if, if a Democrat does something, I put on Facebook, I'm kicked out the caucus. It's like, so if I see a Democrat shoot somebody in the face, I can't say anything. Not here to pick on my own colleagues, but I just feel that my, my voters didn't say, well, if you see Republicans do something, jump on it. They told me, make politicians honest. That's what I voted to do. What good is it if we're not going to get the training? Over 100 years later, we still don't have any African-Americans in the executive committee. So I'm kind of, I'm totally supportive, and, and I, and I really want to give a shout-out to Mr. Bukowski that I've seen do much diversity in what he, what he's been doing. So it's not only his words, I see his actions. I want to give a shout-out to Roger Morgan, Poinstein, Manny Bolter being a minority in the sense of being a female, seeing her do a wonderful job as chair, but also sometimes attacked because she was a woman. So, and this is coming from us at the top. I'm going to keep it as short as I can, but that's my question. If, if we're not going through the training, how do we expect that, I don't care if we pay somebody 5 million, 10 million, $55,000, a billion dollars? We can't just throw money at a problem and say it's going to solve it if we can't get it together here at the top.
So that does ask for a short response.
Sure, yeah. I think you'll see as we roll out our organizational improvement initiatives, or we customer service, cultural intelligence, a whole number of various. Yeah, we would encourage commissioners to take part in the training as a leadership statement so that, you know, the organization can see how important it is because you're participating. Now, I can say, and especially in the Ottawa County DEI initiative, we had some of our major companies that wanted to sit in, and that was fine, too. So, I mean, and anything we develop is open to anyone. It's open source. You know, we'll just give it to people after we develop it. And so, yeah, we would definitely encourage commissioner participation in training.
Has it, has it ever been really sent it to us in our emails for us to participate? And I would also ask the chair to get his opinion on it.
We're not there yet. I mean, we're still developing things with my limited time here so far. So that will be coming, yes.
Yep. Stay tuned.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else for a first opportunity? Otherwise, I'll move to several that have asked for a second shot and, and a comment. And I'll remind my commissioners that our standing rule set a cumulative five minutes limit, so. Did you have anything further, Commissioner Bukowski?
No.
All right. Commissioner Coleman?
I do, but I'll save.
You probably used your five. All right.
Thank you, Chair. I, I could probably be accused of trying to throw the baby out with the bathwater here, but I appreciate those who supported my attempt to divide the question because I would vote for 12 of these 13 things. The, I, I also want to just clarify, you know, I'm not wholly opposed to DEI. I think there's some positives that come from, like Commissioner Bukowski said, that focus on thinking through, you know, what does it look like to be inclusive? And I'm not wholly opposed to consultants. You know, in here, we're spending money on consultants on the specific task of broadband mapping so that we can understand that problem better in the county. Like, so, so I'm, I'm neither wholly opposed to DEI or consultants, but I do think that we would do a better job of the goal of, that Commissioner Bukowski so eloquently stated, focusing on inclusion if we kept outside DEI consultants out of it. As a question, probably to the administrator, just for future understanding, you know, this is $10 million of another, you know, 117 coming down the pike. What would not qualify under that revenue loss category?
I'm going to have to ask Jeff for assistance with that one, I think.
Do you need the answer now? I'm just going to, because that's a complicated question.
That could certainly be later detail because it's not applicable until that remaining 117 comes through.
Right. And those are reasonably complicated rules as to how we apply it. And then we have the, the account allocation, quote, shuffling question that we also talked about. Any other questions or comments? If not, I just, just a couple of things. One, remind the commission, we did address this $10 million allocation earlier when we agreed to set aside $10 million for emergent needs before. What is before us now is, is an intent at our request to be more specific in clarifying how you're going to allocate, how we propose to allocate that initial amount of $10 million. Would also note that certainly to the extent that some of these involve contracts that require us to approve them specifically, we'll see contracts coming back to us for specific approval from, from here on. And then, as you go through this list, you know, I know there's questions about, this is, this is federal money. It's kind of funny money. We have talked about the fact that the federal grant and allocation here does, in fact, have limitations on it, and a lot of limitations, including the fact that it cannot be applied for refunds to the, to taxpayers that may not be used to pay current debts. And there are lots of other limitations. But if you look at this list, these are not make-fund projects for the most part. These are, these are projects and costs our taxpayers are going to incur, whether we apply the ARPA funding or not. Eventually, we will have to cover. Somebody's going to have to cover the $2 million for the drains. Somebody's going to have to cover the necessary improvements to the, to the health clinic and so on. So I, I suggest that this is a reasonable, this is a fair, this is appropriate allocation of these available funds. And frankly, if we don't take them, it'll go back, as was pointed to, another community. They will use them, and we'll have to ask our taxpayers to cover this cost elsewhere. So I think it's a reasonable approach. With that, I will ask the clerk to take the roll call.
On the motion to adopt Resolution 13, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teel.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
No.
Morgan.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
No.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burrell.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breavy.
Yes.
Commissioners Bolter.
Yes.
Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 16 yeas, two nays. The motion passes. Resolution 13 is adopted.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's move to item number 9G, and I will call on Commissioner Skaggs.
I move Resolution 14 of today's date, temporary personnel to implement the COVID Emergency Rental Assistant Program Round Two from the KCCA.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Hennessy? Any comments or questions from commissioners? I do not see any, so if you would take the roll call on this one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 14, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teel.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioners McLeod.
Yes.
Legrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burrell.
Yes.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioner Boulter.
Yes.
Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes, resolution 14 is adopted.
Thank you. We will move to item nine H and I will call on Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I would like to move resolution 15 of today's date, funding the temporary personnel to implement the COVID emergency rental assistance round two, Kent County Community Action.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Bukowski. Any questions or comments from commissioners? If not, will you please take the roll call?
On the motion to adopt resolution 15, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan. McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Excuse me, Commissioners Boulter.
Yes.
Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes, resolution 15 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item number. We'll move to item number nine J and a call on Commissioner Bukowski.
Thank you, Chair. I move, uh, motion 16, or excuse me, resolution 16 of today's date, um, which is, uh, giving fiscal services the ability, uh, reimbursement to make up to or approximately 14,285 payments related to the CERA funding.
All right, it's supported by Commissioner Hennessy? Comments or quest? I'm sorry, Commissioner Sparks. Any comments or questions from commissioners? All right, if not, um, you ready to go? Oh, okay.
Sorry, I had some dust or something.
On, uh, resolution 16, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner McLeod.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Uh, Hennessy.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Bukowski.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Uh, Boulter.
Yes.
Antor. Chair Steck.
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Chair, you have 17 yeas, zero nays. Motion passes.
See why it's so hard to follow in your footsteps, Mandy? All right, let's move to the next item on our agenda, which is our second opportunity for public comment. If anyone is here that wishes to address, uh, the commission on matters relating to general county matters, you may do so by attending, uh, stepping up to the podium. Identify yourself, please, uh, as is required under our standing rules and you have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Jason Law. I'm the Executive Director, um, of Therapy Services of Advisor Care Home Health and Hospice Services. Advisor Care delivers home health care services to families who use many different insurances across Michigan and other states. We complete this work in Michigan, Arizona, Nevada, and Washington. In Michigan and the other states I mentioned, Advisor Care is working with clients who have been catastrophically injured following an auto accident. While doing this work, we have observed fraud and abuse, which caused us to applaud many of the regulations and utilization review policies that have been put in place by some of these bad actors as a result of the 2019 Auto Insurance Reform Act. As a result of home health not being considered in the reform conversation, a sweeping reimbursement change was initiated for services that were not covered by Medicare. These services include hourly home health aids and hourly nursing care in the home. With the sweeping change, home health care agencies are experiencing a 45% reduction in our reasonable rates for hourly care. So, for example, a home health aide that we used to get paid $30 for, we are now only getting reimbursed $14 to $16, which isn't enough to cover our expense of paying someone to be there, let alone the overhead of running that business. If things do not change, more and more of these clients are going to be forced to move into nursing homes or their family members will be forced to quit their current jobs to stay home and care for their loved ones. Please consider our appearance on the next VOC meeting agenda to discuss a resolution urging urging the state to amend the State Auto Insurance Act to allow claimants and their families to continue to receive care in their home. We have and will continue to work with the state legislature and believe resolutions from their own districts can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Nick Prill. Um, I just have, and hopefully, um, maybe somebody can, cause I know you guys don't respond to questions while we're up here. But, uh, when Matt, um, made a motion to divide the question, if I look at your standing rules, it states if a pending motion or resolution or an amendment to either contains two or more parts capable of standing as a separate, as standing as separate questions, upon the motion of any member, the board must vote on each part separately. So I'm not sure, to me, that reads that, uh, Matt made the motion, therefore the question is divided. It shouldn't have gone to a vote is the way I read that. And that's rule 3.15 in your standing rules. So, uh, if you guys can look into that and provide me a response, I would appreciate it.
I have your contact, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Anyone, yes, good morning.
My name is Sean Zimmerman. I'm the, uh, facility liaison for, um, three of our first aid home care companies and, uh, our elite nursing care company. We employ about 300 people within our companies and take care of over 80 individuals who are severely injured in auto accidents. Uh, in 2019, the Auto Insurance Reform Act changed things drastically, which was definitely needed. Uh, there was a lot of gouging by some companies that was going on and facilities and changes had to be made. I think a lot of great did come by the law that was put in place. Like Advisor Care, uh, we were not one of the companies that were gouging. Uh, we had fair and equitable rates. Through the new law, which was put in effect in July 2nd of last year, uh, if there is, the rule was if there is a Medicare code, insurance companies have the right, uh, if there, if there was not a Medicare code, the insurance companies had the right to reimburse you at 55% of your bill rate in January 1st of 2019. Fortunately for us, there is a Medicare code. Unfortunately, uh, the insurance companies are not following the new law and are choosing to reimburse us, um, at whatever rate they want. So they're, they're saying they'll reimburse us at 55%. Uh, our rate was around 30 to $32 an hour. Our operating costs are around 25 to $28 an hour. And currently, like Advisor Care, we are only being reimbursed around 14 to $18 per hour, uh, depending on which, what, which insurance companies, whatever they want to do. Uh, one of them is actually not reimbursing at all, has not reimbursed anything since July 1st or July 2nd, sorry, of last year. Over 60 home care companies have closed their doors since July 2nd. We're close to having to do this ourselves. We service almost 10,000 hours a week with our four companies. Um, we lose about 80 to $100,000 a week right now. Currently, we have over $2 million in accounts receivable, uh, that we're trying to get from the insurance companies. There was a new bill re, uh, that was introduced by Representative Green that was, uh, introduced two days ago into the Senate. Uh, there was actually is enough, um, senators that will support the bill. Uh, Representative Brandon is the, uh, insurance chairperson. And when a bill's introduced, it then goes to, uh, in a committee to kind of look over that and decide what they want to do with that. I contacted Representative Brandon's office yesterday and was told by your office that they will not be letting that go to the vote, uh, for the whole year. So that means they're just going to hang on to it. Uh, if this happens, we will not survive. Uh, our, our company will, will be done. Um, I'm not sure how many more months we can continue like this. We're asking that you allow us to be on the agenda for next month to speak and have a conversation around the issue at your next Board of Commissioners meeting. If it, if we can't move this on, 300 people will lose their jobs and all the clients that we have are going to have to, like Advisor, our Advisor Care rep said, uh, they're going to have to either go back into hospitals or into facilities. And if they get to get into the hospitals, it's going to wind up being us that are paying for that in the end anyways with our taxpayer money through Medicare. So, um, please consider that, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good morning.
My name is Angela Dilling and I did not know these gentlemen were going to be here, but I am a home health aide. And I made $14 an hour. So if they're only getting paid that, they're not even covering their full life employment. Um, I did used to take care of a gentleman that was in a car accident and he got very good care. And I can't imagine what he is getting now because of the cost would not be covered by what the new car choices.
I did also want to address, um, the broadband that is in the, what you guys just discussed about. Um, just wanting to know and really make sure that 5G or the internet of things is not necessarily in this because there are a lot of questions about the health safety of such a thing. Broadband is not what I'm talking about, but the 5G and, you know, internet things where we're having, you know, coming out every, you know, hole in our community. Thank you.
Just remind members from the public, if you would like a response from us to make sure that your contact information is provided to the clerk. Any other comments or questions? Yes, okay. Welcome back, Sean.
I like double dipping. I gotta check, this thing is on. How much cumulative has the county of Kent spent on DEI programming since you guys started funding initiatives of this sort? Um, because I can think back, how well served is society by quotas? How many of you remember affirmative action? I went to school, college in the late eighties. I was a veteran. I served my country for four years. I served overseas. My wife worked a job, an entry level position, and I was afforded my military scholarship. We were effectively below the poverty line, living in Chicago at the time of my schooling. I qualified for not one single grant or aid. And yet my friends, living right next door to us, people of color, qualified for all kinds of stuff. I didn't, I didn't feel resentful and I don't feel resentful now. What I did was buckle down, I made ends meet and I got my schooling. And I worked diligently to better myself and my family. You guys are worried about getting training? I can't even believe that. Sit down in front of the mirror, look deep into your soul and decide whether or not you conduct yourself in a manner on a daily basis that gives you peace, peace of mind. Are you doing the right things? My four years in the military, I roomed with African Americans and Hispanics the whole time. And I learned more about them in that period than I ever thought possible. And what did I discover? That working side by side with them, we had more in common than we would ever have difference. I think individuals in this community are ready to take back personal accountability and responsibility and we don't need to spend millions of dollars training people. Google, Google isn't even my search engine of choice. Google implicit bias bias training. And you'll see what a muddled mess that is. There is no evidence to this day that implicit bias training accomplishes anything other than in the poorly directed messages that are being conveyed, it stirs up anger and hate. Help individuals. Don't worry about blanket training that's done poorly. Help us help ourselves. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move to the next item and, uh, I'll turn this over to Al for administrative report.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. Uh, we do have the Administrator's Digest that goes out pretty much weekly. We put one out last week, so I won't repeat all that. Uh, I will say, uh, yesterday I spent at the Michigan Municipal Executives Conference. Uh, many of our Kent County, uh, city township village managers were there and, uh, uh, several of them reiterated how thankful they were for the quadrant meetings and look forward to more meaningful interaction with Kent County. Uh, also, uh, if you haven't already, you'll be sent some things, uh, for the strategic planning session that's coming up. So we would please ask you to complete those items, uh, before the session. It'll make it more meaningful. And then, uh, I just wanted to mention one thing, just because I'm a government geek. I've been doing this work for 38 years. I just wanted everyone in the room to know that other than citizen petition, the only way a county commissioner, a city council member, a township board member, a countywide elected official can be removed from office is if the governor does it. So this Board of Commissioners has no authority to remove one of its members or anyone else who's elected from office. And I thought it'd be important to make that clarification. And that's it.
That's it? All right. With that, I was so sure you caught me off guard, so. All right, reports?
Yeah.
Okay, reports. Commissioner Jones, you have a report.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I wanted to start with the conversation I had with Commissioner Burl, who had suggested that maybe this year reports is, uh, potentially evaluated to have something in writing as well, uh, maybe even, um, you know, something that we'd have ahead of time. And then this section could be more of a question, comments, discussion part after you've already had the summary. Now that we have a quality board liaison on hand, um, you know, we have an awful lot of additional boards and committee assignments that come to us. I think it's helpful to, to think about that. So I wanted to start my report piece, cause I've been to four additional committees, uh, and boards other than this one. Um, so I'll start with the West Michigan Sports Commission. We did have a Canary Report. They are looking at continuing to develop the Myers Sports Complex. Uh, details will be coming in the near future on the annual luncheon and they will have a fall golf outing. The Kent County Parks Foundation, we've spent quite a bit of time talking about a potential Parks Village. We've been doing this, um, with Dan and they've been discussing to a centennial celebration and having something very significant and making a, in a very, uh, big community project around the centennial celebration for Kent County Parks. Experienced Grand Rapids is still working on recovering to our pre-COVID status. They are booking groups, but it just isn't to the level that they had prior to COVID. I attended the supervisors group meeting and there is still additional conversations about the sustainable business park. Uh, I'd like to encourage Al and Dar to circle back with that group. And, uh, they had an, already had a meeting with them, but I do believe there's, uh, an opportunity for additional time for them to meet. And then I'm going to throw this in reports. I did also attend a quadrant meeting, which I commend the administrator for leading. And it was very well received by those who were there. They even came up afterward to tell me how much they appreciated the outreach and that type of communication. So the quadrant meetings included local elected officials, uh, and we all met for the one I went to, uh, at Plainfield Township. So thank you for doing those.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick response, I did receive that request. I've talked to Commissioner Burl about that concept and we are taking a hard look at how we can incorporate a, a request for a written report. I don't think it's to be in addition to the oral report, but maybe as an abbreviation of that process. So we will continue to look at that. All right, Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just have an update from the airport and the numbers for December, the passenger travel numbers, um, are at about 92% of where we were at in 2019. So things are looking up still and, um, it's continuing to get better and better. Um, a couple significant capital improvements are coming down the pipeline. And, um, hopefully we'll be able to make those in the next year or so. Um, concourse A work has begun, but a couple of those, um, items that I mentioned would be working with the TSA to improve the checked baggage system, which, you know, you go to the, um, counter, you drop your bag off. You hope that it's not like too heavy. Um, and then, you know, it goes somewhere, but it goes, you know, behind the scenes and you really hope that it's at your destination. And this will help, the improvements that are being made will help get your bag to the destination faster. So, um, you know, out to the carts and onto the plane, the correct plane. And just improving that system, it's, it's amazing behind the scenes what they can do. So that's something that's So that's something that's coming down the pipeline. The next thing, too, they've been having conversations with the rental car companies in improving the facility there. There's a lot that goes into the rental cars. There's, you know, cleaning, fueling, and we could use more vehicles. So that is, you know, possibly building a new facility, some more space for that to get done is one of the improvements that we'd like to see. So I'll keep you updated. If you have any questions, always feel free to reach out to me or Commissioner Morgan, and we're happy to give you the details needed. There's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. I have two reports. One, last meeting I was complaining that if we moved from three to two commissioners, we don't have good representation on the airport board. And it dawned on me that we used to have reports from the Grand Rapids DDA, and so we have a significant financial investment in that entity. And so I took it upon myself to get a written report, which I will email to you all, and to let you know that there really wasn't much exciting happening in January. Though, another forewarning is I will work with the other commissioners that represent parts of Grand Rapids to help with this reporting from the Grand Rapids DDA. The second report is that the Friend of the Court Advisory Committee did meet. I think we're still collecting applications for a custodial parent and a family law attorney to sit on that advisory committee. So we really need folks to continue to come forward for those positions. If you know anybody who would like to apply, we have a new chair, Felicia Clay, took over. And last but not least, looking forward to, speaking of the North Kent Center, the North Kent Center will not only have a very substantial presence of the sheriff with the new, whatever they refer to that as, their station up there, substation, and the health department. There also will be a number of places for other departments to hotel. And so staff, you know, pick the department, instead of having folks coming all the way here, we could have staff meeting folks in northern Kent County there in Cedar Springs. So the Friend of the Court continues to look forward to those conversations on how that will roll out and become, put into practice.
Good, thank you. Any other reports?
If not, I have one report, and then we'll move to miscellaneous, because I have reported for, I think, years now on the litigation between the Lake Shore Regional Entity and the State of Michigan, where we have been battling with them with respect to the oversight and management of the PIP, the Lake Shore Regional Entity, and the funding from the state. And that litigation has finally been negotiated. A deal has been papered and approved, and we are settled with the State of Michigan after more years than I can count, so.
Wow.
Now, we still have funding issues, but I'll report on that the next time soon. All right, if nothing else on reports, a move to miscellaneous. Anyone have any miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So I'm not typically one to complain during miscellaneous, but I have some constructive feedback. The first is a matter of procedure. In my past, I served on the Plainfield Township Board, and when we had closed session, we always moved it to the end of the agenda so that we didn't have to ask all the members of the public and staff and others that are here to leave the room and then come back into the room. It seems a little disrespectful to them and to their time, because you'll see there's a lot fewer people here than were when we started our meeting. And I think it would be, it'd be great for us to consider if we could, when we have closed-session items, to move those to the end so that folks can hear things that they may be able to actually give feedback on, unlike our closed-session items that folks can't necessarily learn all the details of immediately. The second piece is these barricades. I have to say, we talked a little bit about unity and getting away from division, and we're quite literally divided up here. You know, I understand that we're hopefully in the last stages of a, hopefully a final major surge of the virus, but as a skeptic, I can't, I can't imagine these are providing a whole lot of protection from coronavirus. So I'd like to just put that out there for consideration, that maybe we can, you know, be a little less divided and maybe be able to see and converse with each other a little bit better moving forward. Thank you.
Well, as soon as the last of us get COVID, then we're probably there, and we're almost there. So, all right, I had Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Steck. Thank you for that, Commissioner Green, because I know I'm supposed to address the chair, but these things are forcing me to talk to Commissioner McLeod and Commissioner Coleman.
You want to stand up, Stan, and then we can...
Yeah, we could. So, no, I, something was brought up today. I want to thank the people and the healthcare people that came and spoke about the no-fault law and the things that are happening on that. I mean, it is such a complicated issue, and if you get your information from the news between the gambling commercials and the cannabis commercials, there's enough time for a 30-second segment telling you about no-fault, and you really end up knowing nothing except you're going to get free money if you make this bet with this casino online. So I appreciate that. I would like to get more information on it. One of the things that they're asking for is a resolution from this commission, and I've been told in the past, and maybe this is something we could explore, is that we don't do resolutions. And it seems more and more, you know, they pointed out Rep. Brandon, saying that, you know, he's going to hold this up just for a year and no action through his committee. And that's happened so many times. I know with four-year county commission terms, that was a lot of the problems over the years, is someone that was chair on the committee didn't like it, so he held up the vote on that. I mean, that stuff in Lansing continues. It's getting more and more hyper-partisan, and it's not good. But I think our ability to pass resolutions, to show our support for or against a law needs to be re-looked at, and maybe a better explanation to me why a person or a commissioner can't bring something forward that would be a resolution of the whole commission and put some weight behind the positions we hold in representing our community. But once again, thank you to the two folks that came today and spoke about our auto insurance reform. It was another example of, they had to pass it to find out what's in it, and what's in it's not good.
Thank you. Commissioner Bolkowski.
I'll take a moment to agree with Senator Ponstein on many of the portions of what he's said. I would like us to look at that opportunity, though I know that is some, yeah, that can really be some contentious territory, and we will not only order lunch but maybe dinner as we debate our support or not. But that doesn't mean we can't look at it again. On the substance of the matter, absolutely, there are folks, unfortunately, who have died because they have lost care because of the auto no-fault deformed bill of 2019. The alleged abuses and fraud that occurred before the bill, we could have and we should have fixed those, but the sweeping reforms and disability advocates is not a provider for auto no-fault. We simply work with the people with disabilities who are trying to live self-directed lives, who now had a contract with an insurance company, which now is not being honored, and the retroactive changes of reimbursement rates, again, having real massive significant impact on people's lives. So, sorry for being a little passionate there. I could just go beyond that passion, because what, you know, at least in miscellaneous to say, as was spoken at the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast on Monday morning, there's a lot of support to make this change, this fix to that bill, and now to learn that it's being held up, ah, you know, it's, and there are people in Kent County, again, negatively impacted by this, and our insurance companies continue to have record profits. So I could go on. I'll mute myself.
I think Commissioner Bolter was next.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I could go on and on about auto no-fault, too. If anyone needs specific information on it, let me know. I've been working on it extensively. I will second Commissioner Green's comments on the dividers. I literally can't even see people because it's like a glare. You all have white, like, glare faces. Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, you know, is this really science? It's airborne. Anyone who wants to sit next to me that wants a divider, fine, but if we could get rid of those and follow the science, that'd be amazing. Also, just want to mention our board liaison, Kaylee, had her baby three weeks early, so we want to welcome a new member to our board. Eliza Helen Gashow came three weeks early, so congratulations to Kaylee. And then lastly, when we're starting to incorporate our budgets this year, you know, I'm embarrassed to say, I didn't realize that we have people in the Sheriff's Department who are only getting 40 hours a week vacation or leave time or whatever that is. If that's the case, we certainly need to remedy that. However we can do that, whatever we can do for them, I hope that we look at that, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo Commissioner Jones on the positive impact from the quadrant meetings. Also, during this meeting, I've been echoing to myself, so I'll lend my voice to Commissioner Green's comments on the Plexiglas. And lastly, I just want to communicate why I'm not wearing my normal bland attire. And for those who haven't been around previously, the reason I'm wearing this today is that next week is Chinese New Year. Two of my sons were born in the beautiful city of Kunming, China, so the Coleman family celebrates Chinese New Year each year, and I wish a Happy New Year to all of those in our community that celebrate the Lunar New Year.
Happy New Year. All right, anyone else? Mr. Womack.
I'd like to thank the Urban League for giving me the honor of winning the Drum Major's Award, Dr. Martin Luther King Drum Major's Award. I'd also like to thank every member of the Kent County Commission, because without your help, it probably wouldn't have happened. It became more than just being a voice for the people. I had a chance to deliver outcomes, but that's a team effort. So I accept that award, not only for myself, but for Kent County Commission.
Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to just take a moment and express my gratitude for the vote of confidence this morning to serve as minority vice chair. While this was not something I originally aspired to or expected, I am nonetheless honored to serve in this role for this year. I am especially humbled by the support of my fellow Democrats. In the end, if this title is anything, it is I have a responsibility to help this entire board, but especially my fellow Democrats, in representing them on the executive committee. I'm certainly thankful for my family for their support as I begin this role. For once, my wife was actually excited to hear what we were talking about this morning. And now typically, our proceedings are a topic I am exclusively allowed to talk to our eight-month son about, because it helps put him back to sleep. You know, Chair Steck, we cannot deny that this board shares so many of the same values, even if we do not always see it. We want our neighbors in this county, whether they are a person of color or white, wealthy or poor, rural or urban, disabled or not, a West Michigan native or new to this community, to be able to live their lives in peace and prosperity. And it is also true, while we hold so many shared values, we do not always come to the same conclusions on how to support this community. Because frankly, if the answers to our community needs were very clear, deliberative bodies like this wouldn't be necessary. It would be apparent. But it's through that honest deliberation of this board that we can truly find solutions that weave together the multiple strands that make this county amazing. And we all know the opportunities ahead of this year, ahead of us this year, and it is just my hope to help foster that honest deliberation, so that at the end of this year, all of us can be proud of the work we've done. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations to you, too. Anyone else? If not, I have a couple of items. Again, I joined in congratulating Kaylee on the birth. It's exciting, particularly since she was here in the morning, and then she was gone. And who knew, she was just going to go have a baby? So, anyway, congratulations. Yes, we'll take another look at the cones of silence that seem to be separating us, and at appropriate time, we'll discuss what we need to do with that.
Thank you to those of you that were able to attend one or more of our quadrant meetings. I agree that they were very well-received, a great way to reach out to our local entities and establish stronger relationships and ability to work with them in a very effective and collegial way. There will be some changes here going forward in light of this election. We will be moving Commissioner Wooden to the Finance Committee, and then we'll have to make some changes, and I'll be making those announcements over the course of the next couple of days or weeks. And then, note that there will then also have to be a new seating chart. I know we just got settled in here, but I knew that was sort of a Plan A, and now we're going to go to Plan B on seating charts, so watch for where your seat may be next time. All right, with that, I will call on Commissioner Ponstein for a motion to adjourn at slightly after 11 o'clock in the morning.
I make the motion that we adjourn, subject to call the chair to Thursday, February 10th, 2002, at 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
Support it. Multiple supports, all those papers say yes.
Yes.